Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Christopher Clark, Town Manager. It's my honor and privilege to call the first Town Council meeting of Monday, July 9, 7:00 PM, the reorganizational meeting, the 39th seating of the Town Council. And my first order of business is to turn it over to the senior counselor, Mr. Vandal.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Let's pledge allegiance to our flag. Swearing in of councilors elect by our town clerk, Matty Doust. Matty?
Thank you.
Reverend Peter Joyce, pastor of Blessed John Paul II Parish, will perform the invocation.
Thank you, counselor. Thank you for the opportunity and the privilege to be here. Let me express my gratitude as a citizen of this wonderful community. My thanks to each of you for your generosity and your service. Those of you who have done that in the past and those who are new are grateful that you are willing to make this sacrifice for the sake of our community and for its betterment. And I'm privileged to be able to ask God's blessing upon your work and upon our community. Let us pray. Lord, our God, we live in times of great change all around our world. There are moments and places of uncertainty and tension, the concern of violence, and yet we also see so many people struggling and yearning for the gift that we celebrate tonight, the gift of democracy and the ability to choose our leaders and to choose the future of our community. We give you thanks for all those who placed their name in nomination and who ran in this recent election, who are willing to make this claim for our community, and for those who took up the challenge to participate in this process by their making the effort to vote and to make choices that will direct the future of our community. Those choices are made. We ask now, God, that you send forth the power of your Spirit and your grace upon this council and our elected leaders. Help us as a community to come together as they come together to be this council. May they know the gift of your love and the power of your grace and the wisdom that comes from you to discern, to discuss, to decide what is the best for our community and to move us forward in these important times and through moments that are uncertainty. We've seen our landscape change radically and difficultly over the past year and a half. We ask that, as the political landscape changes yet again because of the democratic process, that we would have confidence in our leaders, that they would have confidence in their own selves and in each other. Fill them with your grace and touch our community by the power of your love. There's a wonderful spiritual song called "The Sparrow" that speaks that God's eye is on the sparrow, and I know that he watches over me. Lord God, watch over this community, the eye of the Commonwealth. May your eye be upon this council and upon each of the members of this wonderful and gifted community, that by your Spirit we might come together, that we might show forth your beauty and your grace and your goodness in this year to build a better community and with that, a better world. We trust in your promise as we ask your blessing through Christ our Lord, who is our Lord forever and ever. Amen. Thank you again for the privilege.
Thank you, Father Peter. We will now have roll call of the Town Councilors.
Counselor Clemens?
Present.
Counselor Langivan?
Present.
Counselor Makuchi?
Present.
Counselor McDonald?
Present.
Counselor Moriarty?
Present.
Counselor Pellicwen?
Present.
Counselor Regis?
Present.
Counselor Vandal?
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you. May I have a motion for the chair? Counselor Langivan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to bring forward the name of Counselor Nicola as chairman.
Second.
Discussion?
I just wanted to note that my own vote tonight is purely predicated on the things that residents and citizens had expressed to me over the last few months and in the last two weeks, and is in no means a personal political sort of statement.
Do I have any other nominations? Roll call, please.
Counselor Langivan?
Counselor Nicola.
Counselor Makuchi?
Counselor Nicola.
Counselor McDonald?
Present.
Counselor Moriarty?
Abstain.
Counselor Nicola?
Counselor Nicola.
Counselor Pellicwen?
Present.
Counselor Regis?
Counselor Nicola.
Counselor Vandal?
Counselor Nicola.
Counselor Clemens?
Counselor Nicola.
Six for Counselor Nicola, two present, one abstain.
We have a chair.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number eight, election of vice chair. Counselor Langivan?
I'd like to bring the name of Counselor Clemens forward as vice chair.
Second.
Any discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Makuchi?
Counselor Clemens.
Counselor McDonald?
Counselor Clemens.
Counselor Moriarty?
Counselor Clemens.
Counselor Nicola?
Counselor Clemens.
Counselor Pellicwen?
Counselor Clemens.
Counselor Regis?
Counselor Clemens.
Counselor Vandal?
Counselor Clemens.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Langivan? Nine for Clemens.
Vice Chair, Counselor Clemens. Thank you.[627.16][627.16](Applause). Okay. Yes?
Just one thing, I didn't vote.
Oh.
But it would have been Counselor Clemens.
It would have been, thank you.[639.32][639.32](Laughter).
Eight present and one late, Langivan, yes.
Thank you.
It's unanimous vote. Okay, agenda item number nine is the adoption of the permanent seating arrangement, and Town Clerk Matty Doust will do the honors, please. So if the remaining seven councilors would go over to the podium, she will help you through that process. Do I do that? You want me to do that? That's right. I'm gonna come and help you too. You get to sit right there.
Thanks. Thank you.[671.73][671.73](Applause).
Counselor Langivan has picked seat number three. (Inaudible). Counselor Makuchi has picked seat number five.
Five.
Counselor McDonald has picked seat number 12. Counselor Moriarty has picked seat number 13. Counselor Pellicwen has picked seat number six. Counselor Regis has picked seat number four. Counselor Vandal has picked seat number 11. Okay, agenda item number 10 is the adjournment of the reorganizational meeting.
Second.
Okay, can I have a show of hands on this? All in favor? It's unanimous adjourned. We're gonna move on to the actual Town Council meeting. Agenda item number one, again, would be to pledge allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Again, roll call, please.
Counselor Clemens?
Present.
Counselor Langivan?
Present.
Counselor Makuchi?
Present.
Counselor McDonald?
Present.
Counselor Moriarty?
Present.
Counselor Pellicwen?
Present.
Counselor Regis?
Present.
Counselor Vandal?
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you. Okay, agenda item number 10 is the adjournment of the reorganizational meeting. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, can I have a show of hands on this? All in favor? It's unanimous adjourned. We're gonna move on to the actual Town Council meeting. Agenda item number one, again, would be to pledge allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Again, roll call, please.
Counselor Clemens?
Present.
Counselor Langivan?
Present.
Counselor Makuchi?
Present.
Counselor McDonald?
Present.
Counselor Moriarty?
Present.
Counselor Pellicwen?
Present.
Counselor Regis?
Present.
Counselor Vandal?
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you. Okay, agenda item number three, consider and accept the council minutes of Monday, June 18, 2012.
So moved. Second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Counselor Langivan?
Abstain.
Counselor Makuchi?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Abstain.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Pellicwen?
Abstain.
Counselor Regis?
Abstain.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Five yes, four abstain.
Thank you. Okay, agenda item number four, our subcommittee reports, and I don't think there are... Oh, yes, there is, I'm sorry. Okay, A would be general government, and there was no subcommittee and no report. B is DPW, Counselor Vandal?
No report and no meeting schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. C, education and human services, Counselor Clemens. There was no meeting since the last one, however, we did ask, or I did ask, to have the recording clerk elaborate on the minutes due to the abbreviated version. Would you prefer that they be read then fully at this point? Is that okay with you? That's fine, if you'd like to do that. Okay. I'll spell at the beginning, I'll just go to the agenda items because that's where the discussion happened. Agenda item one was to discuss and vote to approve the change order number seven and the amount of $56,123 revised total as requested by Consigli construction and recommended by Jocelyn Lesser and Associates for the middle high school project. Town manager Clark explained the building would be substantially completed by Monday and will be turned over officially to the town by August 7. He explained they were slightly under the town's portion of the budget and believes they will be very close to the town's allocation. Town manager Clark stated a lot of contingencies have been used and explained how the process works. He added they will probably have change orders from now until October and stated it's not unusual for this type of project. Town manager Clark discussed change order number seven, which includes MEP, mechanical electrical plumbing, and a large portion is for soffit sealing and sprinkler modifications and building modifications. He stated in addition there were smaller items needed such as motion detectors at light fixtures. Town manager Clark stated overall they had a 5% contingency with this project and they reduced it down to a 3% contingency. Counselor Clemens stated she's surprised with these modifications as they are pretty detailed now on the availability and systems that put everything in place before one starts building and expressed disappointment with the request. Town manager Clark described the process and advised there is a give and take and everything has been vetted through for a good long time, good length of time. A motion was made by Counselor Makuchi, seconded by Holly Kristo with a favorable recommendation to council to approve the change order number seven and the amount of $56,123 revised total as requested by Consigli construction and recommended by Jocelyn and Lesser and Associates for the middle high school project. It was a vote by show of hands, all were in favor. And then the agenda item number two, discuss and vote to approve the proposal for the Cops and Kids program to provide transportation to Street or Point Recreation Area in Sturbridge as an alternative swim site due to the closure of the state pool. I stated as the state pool is not ready, they are looking to continue this program that has been very well received over the last couple of years. It's very well run by the police department. Town manager Clark stated on the formal agenda for the council meeting, they're going to have two components to the same motion. He explained this is a spending program and in the past, DCR has funded it because they have not had to pay for lifeguards and use the funding to help transport the kids to Street or Point. Town manager Clark stated the state pool is now under construction this year, so it will be done for next summer. Town manager Clark stated the only change in the motion is to add the wording to accept a contract from the Commonwealth of Mass DCR in the amount of $11,020 for the purpose of doing the alternate site. Town manager Clark stated Sergeant Jose Dinghy does a great job for them and this is consistent with what they have done in the past two years. A motion to amend the agenda item was made by Michael James, seconded by Counselor Makuchi. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, 4-0. Chairwoman Clemens read the main motion, vote to approve the proposal for Cops and Kids program to provide transportation to Street or Point Recreation Area in Sturbridge as an alternate site, swim site due to the closure of the state pool contingent upon the Commonwealth of Mass contractor DCR in an amount of $11,020. A motion was made by Counselor Makuchi, seconded by Mike James, with an all in favor, 4-0. As pointed out, that the Cops and Kids program, this program did start today, they had over 100 children show up, and it was very well done, and they got to go to the beach today too. We saw them get off the bus this afternoon back at the community center, so kudos to all those involved that are making this happen for the children of our community. Agenda item number three, discuss violation and penalty fees regarding the trash violations, review charter and bylaws regarding the issue of amending $250 penalty for rubbish violations. Chairwoman Clemens spoke about the last meeting, stated recycling rates are up but would like to discuss a change in the bylaw regarding the penalty fees. I explained 250 is a lot of money and we are a town with a lot of multifamily dwellings. I expressed concern for penalizing the investors in the town. I added that tenants should be responsible for trash violations, not the property owner. A discussion was held that if a landlord is marking their containers and making sure the tenants are aware of the rules and the tenant still chooses to break the rules whereas the landlord receives a ticket, the hearing officers will be willing to remove the fine off the landowner and appropriately apply it to the tenant if the property owner is willing to specify that tenant. John Pulaski spoke about the landfill contract, asked if they had seen the dollar per ton increase charge as the recycling rates have increased. The town manager stated this operation question for the Board of Health and explained they would need to see what other communities' recycling rates are and compare it to our town. Counselor Clemens stated she would be interested in a follow-up as there is a monetary gain to the town. Town manager Clark explained it is not as simple an issue as it appears and the health director is working on it. Counselor Clemens added the contract with the landfill operators should be upheld. Counselor Makuchi shared her personal feeling and looked at it in a positive perspective, asking why people wouldn't want to comply with the bylaw. She stated things look nice and are getting better. Counselor Makuchi asked about the number of citations issued and how many were single family and multifamily dwellings. Town manager Clark stated he would look into it. Much discussion was held about the procedure of the trash enforcement, excuse me, procedure of the trash enforcement and how a change in the penalty structure could affect the residents. Holly Kristo stated she believes this level works and it gets people's attention and they should stick with what works. A discussion was held about changing the fee structure from D to F to A to C. Michael James made a motion to amend the section 10-104 to change the wording, quote, "Schedule of penalties D through F shall be applicable to," quote, "Schedule of penalties A through C shall be applicable," seconded by Counselor Makuchi. Town manager Clark asked if he wanted it as a bylaw amendment or just as a discussion. Chairwoman Clemens stated it is a recommendation from subcommittee. After discussion about the process, Michael James rescinded his motion and Counselor Makuchi withdrew her second. The new motion was to have a discussion about the amendment of section 10-104 enforcement by amending it to read "Schedule of penalties D through F be changed to A through C," which would change the fine structure from $250 to $300 to $25 to $100. Town manager Clark explained the next steps if the council approves this concept. He stated he would recommend that this go to the Board of Health for suggestion and the council could take a secondary vote, say yes, go ahead with the three readings or the Board of Health could approve, as it was in their jurisdiction also. A motion was made by Michael James and seconded by Counselor Makuchi. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, 3-1... Oh, excuse me, all in favor, it was a 3-1 vote, Holly Kristo was opposed. Agenda item four, discuss and possibly vote to approve new middle high school items as a result of the school building committee meeting on 6/13 at 5:00 PM. Chairwoman Clemens recommended to remove this item as there were none. Town manager Clark noted at the school building committee that they stated there would be a request for a meeting to be held in July. Other discussion was Roger Cowett expressed concern for properties with unregistered vehicles or junk vehicles and also buildings that are not up to code. I recommended that he contact the inspections and health department for more assistance. Town manager Clark stated the community walks will start Friday mornings again and stated if there were specific areas that they would like them to look at, they would be happy to do so. A motion to adjourn was made by Mike James, seconded by Counselor Makuchi, all in favor. We adjourned at 8:55, and this is respectfully submitted by Stacy Reno, the recording clerk. Thank you very much for doing that for the minutes.
You're welcome.
Thank you. That is it, no meeting scheduled at this time. Thank you, counselor. Planning and development, there was no meeting, no minutes. And protection of persons and property, Counselor Langivan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no report and no meeting scheduled at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving along to agenda item number five, chairwoman's announcements. First, I'd like to congratulate the newly elected councilors and re-elected counselor Clemens. And I'd like to personally thank former counselor Larry Spinelli for his service on this council. He served us well. He was the chair of the general government subcommittee and was very active in the community behind the scenes on a lot of projects that the town pursued in the past couple of years. So I wanted to mention that. I also wanted to mention that after our last Town Council meeting, I did attend the June 28 bylaw review committee meeting, at which time I presented to the bylaw review committee our formal request as a council for them to review the bylaw that we've discussed so many times regarding the trash and the trash fines. And they listened and they heard some other citizens, some of the town councilor Clemens was there as well, and they will review that bylaw and it will be part of their report when they're finished going through all the bylaws. So I wanted you to know that that's going through. The day that the town held its election on June 26 was a day that we laid to rest a very special citizen in this community. And for those of you who are not aware of the fact, the town has lost George Parent. And I've seen in the newspaper and I've heard people in the community, former and present councilors and heads of department talk about George, and I just wanted to say for myself that anywhere you look in this community, you'll find George Parent's fingerprints. He was everywhere. And the thing that most people don't know is that he was everywhere. More importantly, there will never be a more devoted husband to his wife and a more devoted father to his children. We've lost a great man, and I feel that I've lost a tremendous friend. And I ask that we take one moment of silence in honor of the passing of George Parent. Thank you. I'd now like to turn the microphone over to the Town Manager. Agenda item number six, Town Manager's announcements. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wish to also express my congratulations to the three new members of the council and the returning member, obviously, and wish to just thank you to Larry Spinelli. I enjoyed the working relationship with him and his time with the council. Also, I attended George's wake, and it really is a good person that was lost to this community. With that being said, I do have a little bit of business, and I know this is a short meeting, and I endeavor to keep it short. Just a few things, just timely. Southbridge Police Department is operating the Cops and Kids Swim Program, and there is free public transportation to Street or Pond in Sturbridge. The bus schedule, the bus is available Monday through Friday, starting today, July 9 to August 16, and it runs from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. The pickup times are 11:00 AM and 2:00 PM. The locations are Empire Buffet, Mary E. Wells Middle School, Mechanic and Randolph, Village Drive, and the community center. And then the drop-off, the 2:00 PM is a pickup and drop-off. The 4:00 PM is the final drop-off. All children must be accompanied by an adult unless the child is a registered student with the Cops and Kids Swim Program. And if you're planning to use the service, please send an email prior or call the day of the service. As space is limited, services will not be provided on selected dates such as July 19, August 15, and August 17. And if there's any questions, one can email copsandkids@southbridgemass.org. Free lunch will be provided by Project Bread at the community center for all children 18 and under at 11:30 AM. It's nice that that program is again able to be activated. So he has that work done and we have tentatively—well, we have scheduled the rail trail ceremony for this Monday, July 16th at 9:00 a.m. The location is going to be at Route 131 at the entrance to the trail across from the Golden Greek. If folks are interested, please contact Yvonne Tortis, my administrative assistant in the town manager's office, (508) 764-5405. Or you can email Yvonne@ytortis@southbridgemass.org. We did have at the last meeting several committee vacant—several committee reappointments. Tonight, we have additional ones. But we do have several vacancies and I thought this would be a nice opportunity to at least say where the vacancies are. And if you are interested, please contact my office. Be more than happy to see what we can do to fit you with the vacancy. We have vacancies on the Agricultural Commission, on the Board of Health, Cable TV Advisory Board, Conservation, Council on Aging, Historic Commission. The Liquor Licensing Board has an alternate position. The Planning Board has one position and two alternates. Public Wayers has one, Traffic Commission has one alternate, and the Zoning Board of Appeals has an alternate or associate. So if interested, please don't hesitate to contact the office. Love to talk to folks about being more active in their community and if it's a way that you wish to give back, certainly we wish to encourage that as much as we can. Also, I've received a notice for the Third Annual Southbridge Farmers Market at the Town Common. It began on Friday, July 6th. It runs from 3:00 to 6:00 and every Friday thereafter throughout the summer. Available is fresh local produce, plants, homemade artwork. And if you are interested in participating in it, you can contact Karen at (774) 42— I'm sorry, (452) 4576. Just three remaining items. We have received information and this will be coming up hopefully this summer from Garofaldo is the design firm to replace the bridge—or to do renovation work at the bridge at 131 over the Quinabog River. So that is something that's coming up. I know that was a council priority and I know they are progressing with design plans and before those design plans are complete, they will do a public hearing here in the The last two items that—I just wish to extend my appreciation to the Worcester Business Journal. We did have a article in there at the end of June saying untapped potential, five central mass business properties that need developers. And one of our properties that's for sale was highlighted in that article. And I just wish to thank the reporter, Jacqueline Goot, for her assistance and entry—level of interest in trying to help the town to market some of our properties. And then we do have a new business that has come to town and I—I've asked them if they would come in for the next meeting. I didn't think this meeting would be appropriate. But the company's name is Fastenal. It's a company that's located over at 484 Worcester Street and I will let them kind of do their thing about their welcome to the community and what they have to offer to the community. But I think it's a—a new business in a new location that has been newly renovated. And I think that's a exciting opportunity for the community to welcome a new business into the—into its fold. That's my report this evening, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Agenda item number seven is the swearing-in and presentation part of the agenda. This evening, we intend to swear-in our new fire chief, Mark DeFranzo. Mr. DeFranzo?
I just want to say a couple of quick words. As you know, it's a hot night here in the town hall, so I just want to say thank you for the opportunity, for this position. The councilors who were here at the last council meeting voted for me to do this job and I appreciate that vote. I look forward to working with these councilors. I hope to meet with each and every one of you to get your perceptions on the fire department and what you think we could do to improve and be better at what we do. So, thank you.
Congratulations, Chief. I'd like to also welcome State Representative Peter Durant to the podium.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate you giving me a couple of minutes this evening on short notice. First, let me say congratulations to the new council members, as well as Councilor Clements, on her reelection. And congratulations as well to Chief DeFranzo on a well-deserved appointment. I—I just want to take a couple of minutes to let you know about a program that is taking place here in the town of Southbridge that's been put out by the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development. The—the department has some tornado relief funds that are available to residents to help them with unreimbursed expenses. This is—a—this is a program that—as myself and Councilor Clements were doing a little door-to-door work last week on Charlton Street and Worcester Street, trying to spread the word. It's a program that has a very short timeframe associated with it, but essentially, funds are available through DHCD for use, again, as I said, on unreimbursed expenses. And it can be basically anything that the insurance company hasn't reimbursed you with. A lot of people are having problems with tree removal, private tree removal, things of that nature. And—and so we want to make sure everybody's aware of this program. Applications are available. Let me give you some information so that everybody at home can have it as well. Applications are available through the Pioneer Valley Planning Council and that is the—the organization that is administering this. The gentleman over there you can talk to is Paul Briscotti or Jim Maisick. The telephone number there is (413) 781-6045. That's the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. You can also find—I—I did post forms for this on my website. You can find them at www.peterjdurant.com. You have to use the J, Peter J. Durant. Otherwise, it goes to some individual in England and he gets a little testy. But—it's kind of weird, but anyway, you can find them—
Dot com?
Dot com. Yep. On my website, up in the upper right-hand corner, you'll find a—a bright yellow link to that. You can always contact my office as well at (617) 722-2060 or email me at peter.durant@mahouse.gov. There are some income eligibility requirements here. However, not all of the funds require—to—are scheduled to go to low income. There's—as you'll see on some of the forms, it outlines the adjusted—the area median median income. 60% of the funds are scheduled for people who make less than the area median income. I think it is 25% for people who make within that range and 15% for those who are out of this range. So I've been urging everyone, if you have unreimbursed expenses, and everyone does, please get these forms, fill them out, and put them in. Again, it's—it's short money. The—the amount that you're limited to is $7,500. They can be for expenses that you have not incurred yet or expenses that you've already incurred. But please apply for them. You won't know if you're going to get any money unless you apply, so don't let this pass you by. We're also trying to put additional funds in here to try to keep this program going. But I—I did want—I think it was important to just make everybody aware because the deadline's coming up on the 25th very, very quickly. And—and so I just wanted to make everybody aware of that so that they can apply. We should be able to—everybody here who—who needs funds should be able to at least put in for them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Moving along to agenda item number eight, citizens forum. Do we have any citizens wishing to come forward this evening? Please state your name and address.
Good evening. Monique Manna, 20 Maple Street. First, I'd like to congratulate the new councilors and also the reelection for Councilor Clements. Welcome and thank you for giving to our community. I'm here to let people know that the FOS group is hosting another community cleanup on August 4th. It's a Saturday, 9:00 a.m. We're meeting at the Mary E. Wells Junior High School parking lot and the areas of cleanup will be determined that day. We'll—we'll have more information throughout the month of July. We're going to have it in the paper. We'll have it on cable access. Hopefully, I'll do an email blast. And we also have a Facebook group if you want to look us up on Facebook. Also, I'd like to make mention to—Mr. Clark, you mentioned about the Cops and Kids and the—the bus schedule. That bus schedule can also be found on copsandkids.com as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Manna. Any other citizens wishing to come forward?
Hello. I'm Susie Gears with the Southbridge Rec Committee and I'm just letting everyone know that last night we kicked off our summer concert series. We had a play, DK Molar and the Devious Dentists, which was sponsored by Gateway Players, and we had one of the best opening nights. So, very excited about our turnout and for the summer series. I just want to thank our committee really quick, Jackie and Lefty Varren, Joe LaSavio, and Gloria Barthelms. It's a lot of work, as everybody up here knows. This is a lot of work and we're volunteers and so I'll take any sort of advice, suggestions, but please come down and it's a—a free event every Sunday, 6:00 to 8:00. I want to thank Rich Goddett for sound. And I'd—again, I'd love to—to tell the public to come down 6:00 to 8:00 on Sunday because some people still get confused on the date, Sunday, Sunday, Sunday. Just real quick, I'm—I'm just going to run down the bands that we have coming up. So this Sunday, July 15th, we have Optical Drive. I wonder if he's in that band over here. Following is Boston Bake Blues, which they're Boston Music Award nominees. On the 29th of July is the John Penney Band. He was here last year, great country artist. Boys of the Town on August 5th. Tall Heights, a cello-infused duo from Boston. The 19th of August, the Red Satin Band, which is jazz, funk, pop, Latin. And on the 26th is an end-of-summer bash with Brian Kearsley. And on a little different eclectic with a gospel night on September the 2nd. So if anybody has any suggestions for bands next year, would—you know, I'll always accept them. And I'd just like to thank our sponsors, Savers Bank, Mass Cultural Council, Southbridge Credit Union, Southbridge Savings Bank, The Lions Club here in Southbridge, Gateway Players, The Vienna, Big Bunny, Harrington Hospital, Southbridge Hotel and Conference Center, Dexter Russell, and the House of Destiny Ministries. We are going to have chips and soda and all that good stuff. The Commission on Disabilities is selling that and all of the pros—the proceeds go to the scholarship fund. So that is good times. And so that is it on that. Just really quick to the citizens of Southbridge. Couple weeks ago, the Center of Hope was kind enough and donated a lot of money and effort to clean up the Henry Street Field and the basketball courts. And I cannot thank them enough. They added swings, they repaired the skate park, just everything. And I cannot tell the citizens enough, please be courteous and pick up after yourselves. Pick up after your dogs. This is our town, these are our parks, and I—I can't stand that we have let them go to pot. And any children out there, it is okay to tell your mom and dad if you see something bad happen because it is truly ours and we need to respect our community. So, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Susie. And for what it's worth, Councilor Clements and I attended last night's opening and it was wonderful. Congratulations. Thank you.
Maureen Doyle, 771 Lubin, Ohio. Road. Can you—can you hear?
There you go.
Can you people hear? Thank you for mentioning the farmers market. That was one of the things I wanted to say. So, just to reiterate, 3:00 to 6:00 p.m., Friday afternoon, Town Common. The other thing is, I know you mentioned George, my fellow Conservation Commissioner, and I don't know how this would work or if it's already in motion or what, but I was wondering if we could get a room named after him. There's Meeting Room 1 and Meeting Room 3, I think, and I think it would be Jazzier if it was the George Parent Room. Especially Meeting Room 1 because Concom has met in there. I just think that would be—
I've—I've never heard anybody use Jazzier and George Parent in the same sentence, but that's a good point. Thank you. That's a great point. We can look into that, can't we?
And you know what? If he were alive, he wouldn't like that.
That's a great idea, Maureen.
But—I just think it would be a nice tribute to him.
Thank you.
He's done a lot for the town and—
I agree.
Thank you.
Are there any other citizens wishing to come forward tonight? Okay. Moving right along, agenda item number nine, vote to confirm the appointment of Dale Farron to the Liquor Board for a three-year term to expire June 30th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Liquor Board being a quasi judicial board, I think it's important that candidates are screened very well. A lot of people don't understand that liquor licenses are given to a town by lottery. Many of them are basically property rights that somebody bought. They may pay five figures for a liquor license when they buy a building. It doesn't automatically convey with the property. And when I say that they're given out by lottery, that means that the town's allotted so many. And if any of those certain licenses are lost, the town loses them. And those are businesses that are economic engines for the town to some degree. And so if we lose it, a full-scale liquor license, there's a loss to the community. This particular person has served on the board before and my concerns are, in looking back at some of the minutes and some of the meetings that I was aware of, it seemed that there was a little bit aggressive in—in interest in particular liquor licenses. And I would just hope that—you know, I thought the previous person who served on this board did a fine job, I think, when—in terms of weighing things out on facts. Just like Lady Justice has scales in a blindfold, not looking at the individual, their status, their class or stand on things, they're looking at and weighing only the facts. And I'm not so sure based upon previous actions on—the on the board that this particular person is in that standing. So my concern is on that based upon past performance and I'm going to have a very difficult time supporting this appointment tonight. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion regarding this vote?
I have a question.
Counselor?
Do these subcommittee recommendations typically—um, I'm—I'm sorry, the board recommendations, do they typically go through subcommittee meetings or are they generally presented straight to the council?
I will—I will answer that and if the manager wishes to add to it. These appointments are made by the manager. And sometimes they do come through a subcommittee, but not always. This particular one has not gone through a subcommittee. As I say, it is the manager's appointment. We, as—a—as the town council, will ratify his recommendation for appointment. Does that help?
Yes.
Okay.
And just to elaborate, normally I would probably go where this is a new appointment, although he served on the board previously, I would generally go through subcommittee. We currently only have two people on the Liquor Board, and if there were a split vote, we do run into the issue of not having any action being taken. So I thought where this gentleman had previously served on the Liquor Licensing Board, that it would make sense to put him in, so we can have a functioning operational board going forward. So that's the reason for the timing. And we do have one alternate position, that if there are people that are interested, we certainly have more room for another person to enter into the mix.
That answers my question. Counselor? Thank you. Anybody? Counselor?
Through you to the manager, how many, if any, other individuals applied for the open position?
There was no other people, this is a person that was on the board previously, I believe he served as an alternate for several years, so again, it was more operational necessity that drove this than anything else.
Yeah, okay. Anyone else wish to? Counselor McDonald.
Was the person who held the position interested to continue?
It's the manager's discretion on the appointments.
Through the chair to the manager, I understand that, but my question was, did the person who was up on that position still have an interest in staying?
He may have had an interest, but the manager didn't.
Thank you.
Anything further? No? Okay. Could we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
No.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Pellegrin?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
No.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Landevan?
Yes.
Seven yes, two no.
Thank you. Agenda item number 10, vote to confirm the reappointment of Jose Altieri to the Airport Commission for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2012, through June 30th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Pellegrin?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Landevan?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number 11, vote to confirm the reappointment of Wendell Barthelmas to the Conservation Committee for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2012, through June 30th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Pellegrin?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Landevan?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number 12, vote to confirm the reappointment of Darlene Culezza to the Southbridge Cultural Commission for a two-year term effective July 1st, 2012, through June 30th, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Pellegrin?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Landevan?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number 13, vote to confirm the reappointment of Kathleen Shields as Animal Inspector for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2012, through June 30th, 2013.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hi, Counselor Landevan.
I notice animal inspector, not dog officer.
That's a separate part of her.
Okay, okay, thank you.
My question to the town manager is, what animals does she inspect? What kind of animals? I don't understand.
I think these are more...
Like horses?
Horses and cows, and larger domesticated animals.
Chickens.
And I guess chickens.
Chickens, too, huh? Okay, thank you. Counselor Clemens?
Thanks. Right, I was thinking dog officer, we changed dog officer to three years, didn't we? Didn't we discuss the fact that it was one for a while, and then we didn't just do...
Yeah, the animal control officer should have been three, and animal inspector, I believe by state law is only one.
Is one, okay. I'm just curious if this was something we should just, you know, go for the three, two, but we can't. Okay, thank you very much.
Anybody else? Could we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Pellegrin?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Landevan?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number 14, vote to confirm the reappointment of Roger Nowrowski as Veteran Grave Officer for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2012, through June 30th, 2013.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Landevan?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Pellegrin?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number 15, vote to confirm the reappointment of Daniel R. Sharrett to the Scholarship Committee for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2012, through June 30th, 2013.
So moved.
Second.
I thought we did this.
That was for the education, I think.
Okay, thank you.
It was a different committee.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Landevan?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Pellegrin?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number 16 is Councilor's Forum, Counselor Landevan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I tried to make this really brief, 'cause it is hot. First of all, I wanna welcome both councilors, new councilors, Counselor Pellegrin, Counselor Moriarty, and also, congratulations to Councilor Clemens for coming back, and I look forward to working with all of yous. And the other thing is, we are in July, which is very hot. So you know what I'm gonna say?
We are not having pool meetings.
No. I think it would be a great idea. But anyways, if we could, if the council so chooses to move our meeting down to the library for July, August, we're talking three more meetings, basically. I think it'd be beneficial to everyone, but I'll do, obviously, as the council wishes. And last but not least, I do, I missed the last meeting, I wanna recognize Counselor Spinelli and Counselor Livinggood. I look forward with, we were working together for many years, and it's, you know, we do sit up here, we all get a lot of grief, it's rewarding, and sometimes it's also discouraging. But I have the utmost respect for anyone that runs and sits in their seat, because that's their way of giving back to the community, so I do thank you guys for your service, and I hope to see you in the future. And with that being said, I will move on. Thank you.
Counselor, we will, the manager will look into that with the library, and also with cable people, 'cause that's quite an undertaking for them to move their show down that road.
I thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Regis?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm not gonna prolong this, just everything Counselor Landevan said, really.
Dominos.
Welcome to the two new councilors. And Counselor Clemens, congratulations for returning, and I love the heat, so maybe I don't agree with that, I don't care, we can be here. The hotter the better. And again, Counselor Spinelli, former Counselor Spinelli and Livinggood, it was a pleasure to serve with both of them, and I loved, I enjoyed Counselor Spinelli's animated stories, and he was so much fun, I loved to listen to him, so, like I said, I won't prolong this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Markucci?
Thank you, Madam Chair. One quick note, I threw you to Mr. Clark, I don't know if it's possible, or Counselor Nicola, at a future meeting, if we could have the hearing officer and the police officer that do our trash violations come before us and explain that process. I'm hearing so many different stories from residents about the step process, that I think it would be educational for us and the residents to hear exactly what's happening. I did receive a letter, Mr. Clark, I will forward that to you this evening. It's just concerning, because what I tell someone, they tell me it's not the answer, that something different happened, so I'm just concerned about the consistency or the inconsistency of that process. So at some future meeting, Madam Chair, if that's possible, or subcommittee meeting?
Yeah, my only hesitation with that, certainly the police officer is something that we can do, we have made a transition in the hearing officers, so we've gone from one to another, to two, actually, as of July 1st, and I think actually, tonight, they're doing their first hearings, so they're fairly new to the process. But what I'll do, maybe I'll talk to the police chief and see if we can do some kind of presentation to a sub, at least maybe start at a subcommittee level, and then move up from there.
That's fine, thank you very much. That's all, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Pellegrin? Get used to hearing that, Counselor Pellegrin.
I suppose eventually I will. I just wanted to thank everybody for giving me this opportunity to serve the community on the council, I'm really looking forward to putting in my term of service here. If you'd like to get in touch with me with any concerns you might have, my number is Again, that's 774-318-9665. My email address is amelia.pellequinn@gmail.com, and I'm going to spell that, 'cause there's a lot of creative spellings of my name out there. And you can also connect with me on Facebook at facebook.com/AmeliaPellequinn. And that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Vandal?
Oh, I have a couple of things this evening, and that is, the railroad tracks down there, the Golden Creek, super, everybody likes it, but we still have two sets of railroad tracks in Southbridge that need, they said they were gonna remove them, so I don't wanna let them, I don't wanna let them forget it. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to just reiterate what you said to the parents, the George Parent family, my condolences, and, you know, we can't say enough about how much of a gentleman he was, so my condolences in respects to them. I wanna congratulate Counselor Clemens on reelection, Counselor Pellegrin, and Counselor Moriarty as well, welcome to the council, look forward to working with you all. I want to also congratulate our chairwoman and vice-chairwoman for their election to your positions. Also, Fire Chief DeFranzo, just to give a little bit of history, not too long, but 1913 is when the town first had a full-time permanent fire chief, and since that time, almost 100 years, we've had seven. Chief DeFranzo is the seventh full-time permanent fire chief in the town of Southbridge. So that's a significant accomplishment for his career for the town, I also think it's important to note that we had chiefs from surrounding communities who were here, and the deputy state fire marshal, Pete Ostrowski, was here as well, so just to show that support, and that speaks well of him and the town of Southbridge, so congratulations to him and the family in the fire department on that. And other than that, that's all I have, thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Moriarty?
Thank you. First off, similar to what a lot of people have already stated, congrats to all those who have been elected and appointed, both a couple weeks ago and tonight, as well as best of luck to former councilors now, Spinelli and Livinggood, and certainly expect, I assume and expect that both will somehow find their way involved with town business, one way or another, they've got plenty of experience. One hope I have is, both council-wise, as well as with the residents, that we can kind of just take, turn a new page, move forward, which would be nice. And then a couple of just thoughts or ideas, and I know I spoke to the manager a while ago about this, and others as well, a couple things that I thought might be useful, they're not gonna help cut down meeting time, but might be useful overall. One is, in addition to the discussion of having new businesses come in and kinda give their five-minute information, I'd love to see us extend that to various civic groups, whether they're youth groups, Pop Warner, Little League, Espira, or otherwise, Optimus Club, et cetera, just to kind of see what they do, help broaden their audience, expose some of the things that are going on in town that are very positive. Also, along the same sort of, along the same sort of line, I'd love to see, again, for five to 10 minutes at most, have various department heads, obviously we have the weekly reports that come in as to what's going on in each department, but I think would behoove both the council, but certainly the general public, to know what exactly the town clerk's office does, what exactly Nick Tortis does, et cetera, et cetera, just as a good way to explain that. And I would think, by them coming up, it also helps, in terms of accountability, when it comes to budget time, as to what exactly they do, where they can be more efficient, things like that. And then lastly, especially on those sort of lines, I'd love to see, and again, I know it's not something people always love to see, but personally I would, seeing, even if it's every six months or so, just a meeting with the school committee, a joint session, I think that would be very helpful, especially when it comes to the budget process there, it's a huge, huge portion of this town's budget, and unfortunately, quite often, it's the kids that kind of get the easy cuts, in a way, so I just would love to see that kind of done as well.
Before you, I just wanna address that last piece, it is true, and in the past, we did have joint council and school committee meetings. Every year, we do do that once, and that's during budget time, in the EHS Subcommittee, when that, when the school budget is presented, most of the school committee members do attend, but it's not something that unless you make your way to the town hall, you're gonna see, 'cause it's not televised. But that's a wonderful reminder that we should continue with that.
Even with the fall, obviously we don't have town meeting format here, but oftentimes in the fall is when the budget kinda gets readjusted, based on late numbers and things like that. I think that'd be a great time to kind of catch them halfway, see how the school year is starting, especially this year with the new school building coming online, and just a good way to keep the lines of communication open, especially if it's televised, just so that the general public sees this cooperation, and that it's not the us versus them that it was the prop two and a half several years ago and such.
Thank you, thank you very much. It's one of the things that, as a part of this council, I'm very proud of the fact that the council and the school committee have seen, seen their way back to working together for the community. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Clemens?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would also like to thank the people who came out to the election, it's very important in this process to get out there and vote, and I thank you for showing your support and choosing me to come back for another three years, I'm looking forward to many of the things that need to get done here in town and being part of that. We've got some good works that we've been working on in the last few years, and I look We've got some good works that we've been working on in the last few years, and I look